Vice Mayor Joyner?
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Ellis?
Here.
Counselor Day?
Here.
Counselor Stokes?
Here.
Counselor Holloway?
Here.
Do you have a call?
Alright, thank you. Alright, do I have a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, the assignment and performance of specific appointees and employees of city council, and discussion and consideration for interviews of prospective candidates for employment in Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A29, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where a discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body and to the extent such discussion will be aided thereby.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I might, could I ask you to add just one provision?
Sure.
Before the motion, someone makes that motion? If you could just add and pursuant to Virginia Code Section 3711A8 related thereto and other and to other agenda items?
Okay.
And that's simply the one that allows the attorney to give advice related to talking about and some other things on the agenda.
Okay. Alright. Is there a motion? Alright. Motion made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Holloway? Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. We will be going back into closed session at the conclusion of our open meeting. We are going to move on to our work session to do the compensation study.
Am I on microphone? I've been told my presentation is on this magical piece of plastic. Here we go. So, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here today. My name is Brian Wolfe. I am a project manager with Evergreen Solutions, the firm that was hired by the city to come in and conduct this compensation and classification study. We're here today to give you a quick update and rundown on our findings. I've been told that we need to keep it short and to the point, so I will make every effort to do that. I've told the mayor that my part is very short, but I can't control who asks me what questions. So, with no further ado, the goals of the study were, we're going to skip this part. This is an overview because I'm going fast. The goals of the study were primarily two things. We were looking to focus on evaluating the city's standing with regards to two factors, internal equity and external equity, and then, you know, of course, at the end, providing a series of recommendations and a written report that will summarize your findings and provide the city with a path forward to implementing some of the things we observed. Internal equity deals with classifications and how jobs are valued across departments. External equity, of course, is probably more commonly spoken of. It's how you compare to the labor market outside of the city. Who do you compete with for your employees? And so, where do you stand? We are currently in phase four of the project. I will not belabor the work plan for you, but we're in the portion where we're discussing implementation options and coming up with draft and final reports. We've been through data collection and outreach and analysis, and so now we're in the final phase of the study, which is excellent news. Employee meetings, so during our data collection phase, we came on site. I was not here for that trip, but some other associates of mine were. We came and met with employees from around the city. Essentially, folks had a lot of positive things to say about working here. They spoke about benefits and the city's commitment to improvement, confidence in leadership, you know, flexibility of work schedule, culture within their departments, all very positive things. They had also some concerns, though. If you've ever spoken to any group of people anywhere, it's not germane to city government. If you ask any group of people anywhere, if they think they make enough money, most people will tell you, no, they've got, you know, a need for more, right? But external equity was something, market equity, you know, the city's ability to compete in the labor force outside of the city was something that came up relatively consistently across, you know, our feedback sessions and focus groups with employees. There was also some feedbacks about internal equity between departments, some concern over compression or pay compression between, you know, different levels of leadership. Also, some people spoke about professional development opportunities, both positively and negatively. There were mixed feedback on that, but we heard enough negative that we wanted to bring it up for you here. We evaluated your current system from a compensation structural standpoint. We discovered that really you have a multitude of pay plans spread across different sections of the workforce, fire, police, you know, public works, et cetera. They all have their different pay plans. One thing we did find positive about that, though, was that even though you had multiple pay plans, they were all fairly consistent in how they were constructed. Some had steps and some were open ranges, and that's fine, but they all had fairly consistent 65% range spreads. The distance between the minimum entry level of pay grade and the top end of the pay grade across the city was fairly consistently 65%. The one exception to that would be your part-time scales. Those are much more varied, as you might expect, because you're having to sort of create them in a one-off, we need a new pay grade for a new lifeguard or something like that. So, that's not too shocking. Average tenure in the city was over nine years. That's a sort of a feather in your cap, I would say. Average, you know, municipal employment across the country, average tenure of the average municipal employee is around six years. So, you've got a more tenured workforce than you might find in the average. That's not terribly surprising in a community like this where government is, you know, not maybe the primary employer, but one of the primary employers in an area. School systems are like the same way. Large county governments are like that in the same way. So, if you're a primary employer in the area, you're going to have tend to have higher tenure. We did find some inconsistency in the data we received on the front end, how different jobs were placed in similar pay grades with different ranges across different departments. So, there's some structural inconsistencies that we uncovered. We will say also that when we're talking about the structure of the pay plans itself, Hopewell does align fairly well with the labor market in placing certain positions in open ranges versus other positions with steps. They, you guys went astray a little bit, in our opinion, by, you know, having step plans. If you're going to do them for one, you may, most people would say do them for all, with the exception of public safety. If you're going to have step plans, it makes sense to have them in areas of like public safety. But, you know, some more analysis on who else is offering step plans for places like admin and public works might be warranted, but we don't see that very often. If you're going to have a step plan, it's typically for the frontline, boots-on-the-ground type, you know, public safety type folks. Market survey was conducted. We received market data from 19 peers. Summarizing here, the most important fact on this page is that we had an average number of matches in our market survey of 11.7 matches per position. We typically hope to have five or six or seven on average per position, but you guys have almost 12 matching peer positions that we were able to compare you to. So, we're more confident in your market results than we might be in the average study, which is great news for you guys and from being able to stand on this data and be confident about what it means. Market results were fairly consistent. The city did fall, on average, below market at the entry level, midpoint, and top end of the ranges, both if we adjusted just raw dollars, but then we also took the extra step of adjusting for cost of living, because we understand the cost of living here is different than it is in your neighboring communities, places that you do compete with, but it might be more expensive to live there, so we corrected all those dollars to relevant Hopewell dollars. And we see that even on the right-hand side there, at the minimum, you're about 5% below. At the midpoint, you're about 11% below, and at the top end, you're about 17% below. This is an average number. This does not mean that every position in the city is, you know, 11% behind market at the midpoint, but there are some that are closer to market, some that are farther behind. This represents the average of our findings. So, definitely was a factor when we started developing a revised compensation structure and how we started placing jobs within the system. So, our key recommendations, I've not gotten to this slide this fast since I buzzed through it in my hotel room before. But, so our recommendations are essentially three primary factors, with the fourth being a support element. First, adopt an adjusted pay plan to govern all general employees on one scale, rather than having scattered segments of the workforce being in different pay plans. Have one central pay plan for all non-public safety employees. We're then also in the process of developing a step version of that same, those same scales for your public safety folks. Then we would also then have recommended reassigning pay grades to every position based on both internal equity relationships, our classification analysis. We went into great detail, and employees, long story short, did a very complicated survey for us, so we have a good understanding of who's responsible for what job functions within the city. So, we've made pay grade assignments for positions based on that and also the market equity findings we discovered. And then, thirdly, taking those classification placement recommendations and applying them to your individual employees, right? So, once we put a new scale in place and we recommend a pay grade be assigned to a particular position, then we have to deal with the people that fit into that position and how do their salaries need to adjust to fit into the new scales. And then, fourthly, you know, we understand the last study of this kind was done, I think, in 2017? Am I right? Yeah. So, that's typically considerably longer than you would typically recommend analyzing these things with some outside perspective. So, we would say every two to three years, you ought to be doing some sort of analysis to just sort of take the temperature of the market and see where you stand, so that you don't have to make such dramatic, dramatic, I'm making up words. I'm talking very fast, I apologize. So, you don't have to make such drastic adjustments. Every, you know, seven or eight years, if you do this every two or three years, you're more fine-tuning as you go. So, it's a worthwhile effort to do this on a slightly more regular basis. Now, implementation does come with a cost. We have done and begun to do that math for you, and I'm prepared to speak about it at a broad, at a high level right now, because we're still in the process of fine-tuning the step plan for public safety and other things. But basically, there's three primary implementation options that we looked at. First one is a bring-to-minimum option, where if we implement the new pay scales and assign the positions, is there anybody in the city who falls below what we've recommended as the new minimum for that pay, for that pay grade? If we made just a baseline recommendation to catch everybody up to minimum, what would that cost? And second one down from there is hybrid parity. This gives a projected salary based on employees' time, both in their position, also their total tenure with the city. A full tenure-based implementation would be very expensive and not something we typically recommend, because what it doesn't capture is people who have maybe had a long tenure with the city. You've got an average tenure here of over nine years, but what if I just got promoted a month or two ago? I've got zero years in my position, but I've got 10 years of experience with the city, so don't I get some credit for that? So, hybrid parity blends those two things, your total city tenure. HR was very good in providing us good data on, you know, classification dates, so how long people have been in their current positions, and we were able to do a blended parity adjustment for those folks. So, that's a second option. Third is comp ratio. Comp ratio is an employee's salary relationship to their current range. So, if I was at the midpoint of my current range, Evergreen recommends new ranges, I would stay at the midpoint of the proposed range, too. That doesn't do anything for compression. That doesn't necessarily adjust for market very well. So, we typically recommend that middle approach, that hybrid parity approach. From a cost perspective, the bring-to-minimum option is in the neighborhood of $400,000, if we're talking about numbers. The hybrid parity approach, which is the direction we're definitely recommending you go, is closer to about $2 or $2.1 million. And that would be pretty significant adjustments to the scales, catching up with the market. You've got some pretty significant market differentials. Our time on site here, we heard a lot about, you know, the city's struggle to compete in certain areas, maybe, you know, some of them are publicly facing areas, like, you know, public safety, law enforcement. So, we've done a lot to address those concerns going forward, to put you on a much better foot, more competitive footing. Do you have any questions? How about you?
That's pretty on point.
Are there any counselors that have any questions? Okay. Seeing no lights. Dr. Manker, I think a good idea would be to have, you know, one or two members on council to get with you and the HR director and finance to, you know, work through what we can financially actually do.
Okay.
And I'll also add that we've had several conversations about how the structure of the plan would work. We do have the ability to fine-tune the approach by setting certain guardrails around implementation. We want to cap raises at a certain dollar amount or a certain percentage, so we can kind of fine-tune the dollars to help be as strategic as possible. So, that's a conversation we're already engaged in, so I welcome that.
What is the minimum now, and what is the suggested minimum?
From an hourly wage perspective, I think the suggested minimum is going to be $16.50 an hour, and currently it's around 12 and change?
12:41.
12:41? There we go.
Wait. I pulled this.
12:41, 12:41 is, is that your part-time ranges?
That's the new state minimum.
Yeah.
What is state minimum 12:41? I thought we went up to $13 last year.
We might have higher. We raised it, I think, our minimum to $13.50 for certain positions, but the state is only 12:41. Originally, the state had approved up to $15 an hour, but that got...
Pulled down?
Yeah.
Right, because I know each year it had an increase, and I think this year was supposed to go to 15, but I thought we had already met the $13 mark for minimum wage, so we're not there yet, let's be.
Not on our scales. I believe there's no one making under the $13.50.
Right.
But on our scales, it's still 12:41.
Okay.
Introduce myself. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jessica Smith, HR. For those that don't know me. But yeah, we do have a minimum as far as employees. I don't believe there's anyone making under $13.50, but like I said, on our scales themselves, it's still 12:41.
No question.
Or 12.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is a record, by the way.
If it's alright with city council, we're going to go ahead and table the first work session to the next meeting, since we're a little behind tonight. Is that alright with everyone? Okay. Alright. Well, we are going to move into our regular meeting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Parton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Ellis?
Here.
Counselor Day?
Here.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Holloway? Do you have a call?
Okay. We do not have Pastor Call. You're here tonight, but we do have Pastor Blow, who will do the opening prayer, and will have the pledge of allegiance done by Counselor Holloway. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, we bless you, we honor you today. We ask you, Lord God, to have your mercy shone down upon this group of city council, Lord. We ask that you would have your way in the meeting. Let the meeting, Lord God, be lifted up.
Amen.
And Father, may your people, Lord God, call upon your name. Father, we ask that you would give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Bless us, Lord God, to be on one accord, for a house divided cannot stand.
Yes.
So, Father, we ask now, Lord God, that you have your way in this meeting.
Amen, God.
Let your spirit prevail. We thank you for all that you do for us and all that you're going to do, in the name of Jesus, my Lord and Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, where liberty and justice for
Alright, at this time, is there a motion to amend the regular meeting agenda to include a special presentation before, number one, the public access defibrillator program?
Still moves.
Alright. Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Stokes. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Alright. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Still moves.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner, seconded by Counselor Stokes, or excuse me, Day. Is there any question or comments? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Alright. At this time, we're going to do a special recognition for a gentleman who got his start here in the city of Hopewell many, many years ago. He served as our city engineer, and unfortunately, we ended up losing him to Fort Lee at the time, where he was the master planning chief for 50 years and is actually one of the reasons why Fort Lee then, when it went through two BRAC commissions and survived downsizing, and is actually today, and is one of the reasons why it is currently growing. So, at this time, I would like to ask Mr. John Royster Jr. to please come up. I'd like to invite all members on city council to please come down. He has absolutely no idea if this was actually coming. He's actually here to support his son, is what we told him.
Whereas John Royster grew up and graduated from Hopewell High School in 1960 and is a proud Virginia Tech graduate, he went on to become a professionally licensed engineer in Virginia. Mr. Royster served as city engineer, building engineer, traffic engineer, and air pollution control officer for the city of Hopewell for many years.
Don't roll pedigo.
Most famously, he served as the chief of master planning at Fort Greg Adams, formerly Fort Lee. With over 60 years of service as an engineer, of which 50 of those at Fort Greg Adams, Mr. Royster has left an incredible legacy, not just for the city of Hopewell, but for Fort Greg Adams, the entire metro Richmond area, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the United States of America. Whereas Mr. Royster has personally hired and trained over 30 employees over at Fort Greg Adams, the director of public works, over 30 of those employees he hired, 10 have gone on to become division chiefs, directors, or installation command representatives. His legacy will continue for many decades to come. Whereas Mr. Royster worked in 1994 and 2005 during the BRAC actions and helped prevent the downsizing of then Fort Lee, and as part of the 2005 BRAC action, he oversaw over $1.2 billion of construction and capital projects, resulting in 38 contracts, 56 new facilities, totaling over 4.7 million square feet, and four major renovations. Whereas Mr. Royster worked with the United States Army Corps of Engineers for all facility and project planning charrettes, design, contractor selection, and construction management for several decades, over 70% of all current facilities on post were constructed on his watch. And side note, he's actually working through the process now of tearing down buildings from when he started. Additionally, he planned and led two real, two annual real property planning board meetings with each installation senior commander for over 40 years. And therefore, we charge the city clerk of council to prepare a proclamation of this presentation to Mr. John G. Royster as an expression of the Hopewell City Council's admiration and appreciation for his professional, personal, and civic service to Hopewell, the region, Virginia, and the United States of America. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my day, my hand, and call as fix the great city of the city of Hopewell and the Commonwealth of Virginia.
You've got some wonderful employees in the back that actually were able to snap some good pictures of you. Would you like to say anything?
I'm special. As of Thursday, I will retire.
I'd like to ask his family members that are here, because there's no way that this man could have done what he's done over the past 60-plus years without his family and also his coworkers to come up.
due in April and May. We're keeping, we have 11 granddaughters, 11 grandsons, because even, and we have four of four of great-grandsons. I don't keep it even. This has been a great, this is a true surprise. I had no idea. I only came for him. He's going to be doing something later, I guess.
Well, we really do appreciate all that you've done, Mr. Royster, not just for the city of Hopewell, but also for Fort Greg Adams and the impact that Fort Greg Adams, a growing and successful and thriving Greg Adams, has for the city of Hopewell.
Let me smile for one picture. One picture, Mr. Royster.
You did good.
I'm just, I'm just so glad you all were able to keep it a little secret. Alright, continuing on with our presentations, Ms. Martinez?
Mayor, councillor, oh, Mayor Parton and Vice Mayor Joyner, and City Council. I know we're short on time. Do you want me to postpone this until the next time, so we can get through the agenda?
Yeah, we can do that.
I'm hoping to that. I would like Mr. Williams to be here for this as well, since he's led the part in this.
Okay. Sure. Thank you. Alright. We're going to move on to communications from citizens. Madam Clerk, will you please read the statement?
A communication from citizens, period, limited in total time to 30 minutes, is part of the order of business at regular council meetings. All persons addressing the council shall approach with the microphone, give their name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number, and limited... Their ward number and limited, limit comments to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any item scheduled for consideration on the regular agenda of the meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Any questions must be asked through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, and slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor from, from further audiences for counsel and removed, subject to appeal to a majority of council. See rules four oh five and four oh six.
Okay, uh, the first person that I have signed up for tonight is Ms. Sharah Fuller.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and new council members and returning ones. My name is Sharah Fuller. I am, um, resident of Ward Five. Um, for those who do not know, I'm also the Ward Five Neighborhood Watch Captain, which I took over after Ms. Day presented, um, to run for Ward Five, um, City Council. Um, every month, we do have a neighborhood watch meeting. It is not a council meeting, for those who don't know. It is just neighbors getting together to discuss things that are occurring, ways that we can give back to our community, you know, neighbors being neighbors, you know, getting to know who we live amongst. So if you have children, you'd, we'd know who your kids are so that we, we see them outside playing, they're not a strange face, and we're not a strange face to the children. Um, our meetings are the first Monday of every month at six P M. They are held at Wesley United Methodist Church, which is right over off, off of Miles Avenue, um, Miles and Norfolk, if I'm not mistaken. All are welcome to attend, even if you don't live in Ward Five. Uh, we do try our best as the captains, um, which there are two other ones here tonight, um, Larry Sears and Ms. Debbie Randolph. We try our best to attend other people's meetings, but we understand that life gets the best of us. So I do apologize in my absence to, to friends, other, um, meetings. Um, I also wanna put out there that, as we already know, this is a new year that is starting. There will be football starting up here in a little bit, and thank you, Counselor Ellis. Last year, he did come to pay Hopewell Youth Football League a visit. Um, all are welcome to come out and attend the games. These are our children who are playing for Hopewell Youth Football League, and they did really good. Our six-year team, they made it to the playoffs. There's little five and six-year-olds running around trying to grab people's flags. So we would love the city, love to see the city come out and support our children, um, and anything else that we have going on. I'll try my best to continue to remind, remind everyone, if I can send emails or anything else, but we would love the city's support, um, to come out and just to participate, just to get back to the grassroots of the city, which is neighbors being neighbors, you know, people remembering that we are here for each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next one that I've signed up is Ms. Laura Pitts.
I am new speaker by any means. This is my first council meeting ever. I've been a citizen of Hopewell for over forty-nine years, um, but I'm here tonight because, um, I, I go to the community center a lot. I have enjoyed the pool immensely. And I would swim every morning when, before COVID hit, after COVID. Things kinda changed, hours got lessened, we couldn't get in until seven o'clock. So, um, the swim team would get in earlier and be able to swim. But as citizens, we couldn't get in till seven o'clock. Recently, I've had a change in my job where I have to be at work at seven thirty, so the current hours for the pool does not allow me to get in and do my exercises and things like that, which is important for me physically as well as mentally. Um, I have enjoyed the pool and I'm thankful for the facility that this city has offered to us as citizens, as taxpayers. Um, I will tell you, um, I'm very nervous, I'm sorry. But, um, I would ask that if you would consider, um, I did get a text today stating, you know, we wanted to talk about the, um, pool situation where the swim team has. I'm thankful that we do have a facility where the children can come in and, and hone their skills in for swimming, but I also wish that it would be a little more equality there as far as for the citizens of Hopewell. Um, today I was there. We have five lanes for the swim team, one lane for the citizens of Hopewell to swim in. And again, I'm thankful, um, that they are there to want to, to, you know, for their athletic abilities and things like that. But I do wish that you would consider opening the, um, the pool back up to the citizens at six o'clock in the morning, if at all possible. Um, I, I know, I felt, this is the only reason I'm here tonight is because I have complained to Ms. Pam and to Ms. Crystal at the community center so many times, please, can we get this pool opened up? I know there's been staffing issues. I know that, you know, we can't control that. But if and when the pool does get fully staffed, I would ask if you would consider having the pool opened at six o'clock for citizens like us, um, who live here in Hopewell, support Hopewell through our taxes, that we can enjoy the pool and have that opportunity before we go to work. I mean, I know the pool is open after work, and I have been there after work. But as a mom, it's hard to, to work out in your schedule where if you can get up before your morning begins and get that done, it's not only, like I said, it's physically, but it's also mentally. There's something about being in that water, I promise you. Everybody should try it, but I do thank you for your time. Oh, I didn't even tell you, my name is Laura Pitts. And I am in Ward Three, and, um, like I said, I have voted all my life and paid my taxes here. I'm thankful for the city of Hopewell, but thank you for hearing me, and I pray you to reconsider. Thanks.
Well, Ms. Pitts, I can tell you that, uh, those comments are very near and dear to my heart because, you know, having better swim hours, um, is actually the reason why I go to the, uh, Petersburg Y in the morning. And, you know, I hope that, you know, the city, you know, can extend those hours out because I a hundred percent agree with you that there's nothing better than just a nice thirty to forty-five minute swim in the morning to clear your mind, get your day started, get the energy moving, and, you know, a great beginning to the day. Uh, Counselor Holloway?
Uh, you know, to, to that, I, I think we, we addressed these matters before. I had no idea that, uh, the ratio of five lanes to one lane is just, doesn't make sense. Could you, uh, make sense of, to, to us, kind of clarify to us why, uh?
That's what we're doing in R Five.
Oh, well, all right, thank you, County. Yeah, but I, I, uh, ditto to the words of, uh, Mayor Parton, I most certainly think that that should happen. Uh, I think probably most of us sitting in here have that same complaint. It's like after COVID, you know, still, it's even pharmacies have stopped being twenty-four hours and shutting down early, and it's, it's just more money for the companies and less service to the people. But hopefully, uh, we can work our way around that and get that straight to the citizens. Thanks so much for speaking this evening. Thank you, Ms. Sharah's way.
Okay, uh, Mr. William Lunsford?
I'd like to thank you for calling me up. Uh, I'm new to the proceedings. I'm actually here for a different matter and accidentally put my name on the list, so thank you for calling me up. I'm gonna sit back.
Sit back now. I say, is that the same thing for your wife?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak tonight, uh, that did not sign up? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna continue on. Uh, at this time, we'll be moving into our public hearings. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please read the statement?
All persons addressing the council should step to the microphone, give their name, and if they reside in Hopewell. Their ward number and limit comments to three minutes. No one may address the council more than once per meeting unless granted permission by the presiding officer. Speakers address the council as a body, not individual counselors. Questions are asked of counselors and staff through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, and/or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in the council chamber may be reprimanded by the presiding officer and removed from the meeting upon a majority vote of counselors present, excluding any counselor who is the subject of the motion. See rules four oh five and four oh six.
Okay, Mr. Bennett?
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and, uh, members of council. I'm Charles Bennett, the Director of Economic Development and Tourism. I'm here tonight to conduct the public hearing for the sale of some city-owned property. Uh, it's, uh, lots one to four, including land not platted in the lots block two subdivision, National View, otherwise known as Tax ID parcel zero six four zero zero one five. The gentleman that, uh, you just met a few minutes ago is the, uh, is the purchaser, uh, Mr. William, uh, Lunsford. And, um, we have advertised for this public hearing, um, in accordance with the, um, the rules. This map that I am bringing up here, essentially on the presentation, shows Mr. Lunsford House, which is in the, uh, the red block, and then the property beside it, behind it, and, uh, this, and then the triangle that's outlined in blue. Those are the parcels that we are, uh, proposing to sell to Mr. Lunsford. Um, these, uh, parcels, uh, make up really his, his side yard and his backyard that he's been cutting and maintaining for, for some period of time. The, the, uh, the property here is not accessible by any public streets. It's also because of the terrain, it's not buildable. Um, and, um, the proposed sale price, uh, to Mr. Lunsford agreed is the, uh, city assessment of twenty thousand dollars. As you can see there, um, from our G I S, and that's the two thousand twenty-three assessment. Um, this is a copy of the progress index, um, advertisement that ran twice before this public hearing. And there is included the copy of the real estate purchase agreement. Um, after the public hearing is closed, uh, when you, when I, when the motion is made, if it is in favor, I'd like for it to be amended so that the city attorney can have one last look at the document if there's any, um, technical things that need to be tweaked before it is executed by the city manager and, um, and Mr. Lunsford. So, um, that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions before we open the public hearing.
Are there any questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing no lights, all right. Public hearing is now open. Um, I don't have anyone signed up for, uh, this public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? That didn't sign up? All right, seeing none. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, at this time, is there a motion, uh, to approve, um, the purchase, or excuse me, the sale of the, uh, EPS property as presented, uh, pending, uh, legal review?
So moved.
All right, motion's been made by, yes, sir.
Just, just one, one thing. On the motion, I have requested, if we could have this read into the records, the proceeds from this property sale, um, to be directed towards the Hopewell City Marina for the purposes of repairs and maintenance.
Okay.
Thought we agreed to.
Is that all right, Mr. Kalos?
Yeah.
Okay.
It just, it saves a resolution and me coming back.
Okay.
And do it all at one time.
All right, so the motion is to approve the sale of parcel tax ID number zero six four zero zero one five, containing approximately point four three eight acres to adjacent property owner, uh, William Theodore Lunsford Jr., as outlined in the attached purchase agreement as dated, uh, twelve thirteen two thousand twenty-four, and to direct the proceeds from this property sale to the city, Hopewell City Marina repairs and maintenance pending legal review.
So moved.
I'll second it. Motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by myself. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes? Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Ward?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight's, um, second public hearing in regard to conditional use permit request to construct a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot identified as parcel zero one three one two one zero located on Atlantic Street. The applicant is SRB Investors LLC, property located Ward Three in zone R two. Again, the request is to construct a single-family dwelling on this lot, and, uh, we complied with all state requirements on the advertisements. The map on the left here just gives you a general location of this property, and on the right is a tighter, close-up aerial view of the particular parcel. In R two, a minimum lot size is, is seventy-five feet wide and seventy-five hundred square feet. This particular parcel here on Atlantic Street is only sixty feet wide, uh, but it does e- equal the minimum square footage. So the nonconformity on this particular lot is just in the width. On the right-hand side is a, uh, sketch of the front elevation of the proposed house. It is a two-story, single-family dwelling, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two thousand and forty square foot, uh, Cape Cod-type structure. Uh, this is a rear elevation sketch and then the side elevations. Uh, this particular property, uh, is larger than the average single-family dwellings that are already in the neighborhood, and that averages, uh, one thousand two hundred sixty-seven square feet. Uh, vinyl siding is consistent with other homes in the neighborhood. This house will also have vinyl siding. And, uh, this particular architectural style of house, Cape Cod, is fairly common in Hopew- Hopewell and is quite a nice addition to the neighborhood. All of this is compliant with the city's comprehensive plan as well. Staff recommends new, single-family dwelling, uh, with twelve-inch minimum eaves along all roof edges. Lot will have minimum, uh, coverage of twenty percent tree canopy at full maturity, a driveway of asphalt or concrete, brick and stone foundations on all, on all four sides, uh, foundation plannings as well. And the proposed single-family dwelling will be in substantial performance with the set of house plans that were presented to Planning Commission on, uh, November fourteenth of last year, with any modifications as conditioned at final approval. There were no modifications that Planning Commission set at final approval, just a, a recommendation to add more windows, and the applicant agreed. Uh, I'm available for any questions before the public hearing, and, um, if you have any.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Ward? Seeing no lights, all right, then go ahead and open up the public hearing. Uh, I don't have anyone signed up for it tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? That didn't sign up? No? Okay. Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the conditional use permit to construct a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot parcel zero one three dash one two one zero Atlantic Street as presented?
So moved.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no, uh, lights, roll call please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, um, at, at this time, can, uh, I have a motion to amend the agenda to move, uh, the next item of business as R Five. I'll second it. All right, is there any discussion? Sorry, can't stay up late, it's school night. All right, roll call please.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving on to R Five, uh, Ms. Waterworth?
Hi, good evening, members of the city council. My name is Lauren Waterworth. I'm the head coach of Nova South Swimming, which is the team that practices at a community center. I'm here and wanted to share my time with another coach on our team, Shannon Royster. We're honored to speak with you tonight and grateful for the opportunity to have this time with you. Our team is a USA swim team. It was established in nineteen sixty-nine, so that means we fall under the umbrella of USA swimming, which is a competitive track. So we currently have eighty-five athletes on our team. So we currently have eighty-five athletes on our team, ranging in ages from four to eighteen, with five coaches. We have practiced at the Hopewell Community Center on and off for the past thirty-five to forty years, and in my experience, since I was in middle school, so the past twenty-five, thirty years. I wanted to speak to, I'm really glad that we had a citizen come tonight to talk, because I think sometimes the perception is that we're at odds with that, and I just wanted to be clear that, like, we're all on the same team. Like, we want to help citizens have access to aquatic programming, to the pool. We've always been happy to partner with the Hopewell Community Center and their membership. Obviously, we don't set operational hours, but we do provide lifeguards in the morning so that we can run practices, and we also provide lifeguards in the afternoon so that we can keep operational hours for the citizens as well as the team. So it's mutually beneficial. Um, in the past two years, I sent data out around all of this, but I just wanted to call out, in the past two years, we have allowed the building to stay operational for those four to eight PM hours for a hundred and fifty days by providing a lifeguard during that time. That benefits everybody, that benefits citizens and the swim team, that we can all still be there due to the staffing constraints that the community center does have. And we would love to partner more. We would love to help in any way we can. Like, if opening the building, I agree with that citizen a hundred percent. Like, let's get her swimming in the morning. Can we open the building to her? Like, how do we partner to do that? So I just wanted to call that out, to say, like, I don't want this to be us versus them. Like, let's all be on the same team, and let's say, like, how do we use our resources to help everyone be successful here? So this team is really important to me. It's been an important part of my life for a long time. I started practicing at the community center when I was eleven years old. I swam there through middle school and high school. Um, it afforded me the opportunity to, to Naval Academy and swim there. I'm now blessed enough to be able to be a coach on this team, to get to work with people like Mr. Royster. We heard about Mr. Royster's family, all three of his kids swim for me. Both of my kids swim. Um, we have a group of them in the back right now who came, they had practice tonight, they went and ate at, um, one of our families owns a restaurant in Hopewell, they went and ate at Saucy's, and they came here. So, thank you for moving it up, because they're all probably tired from being up. But it's opened doors for me, it's shown me a lot about, like, who I want to be, who I want to be in the community, and I think that it's an important piece of the community, that we've, we've been here a long time, we value Hopewell, we want to be, we want to be members with you guys, and so I just want to make sure that's clear. Over the years, I do feel like we've had a strong partnership. There have been times where we have partnered with the city, and we've run swim lessons together. I've run a swim clinic that was run at cost to give people access to the pool, to programming. And so I think there's a lot of opportunity here to bring some of that back. And we want to help develop our swimmers, our athletes, but we also would love to make, um, aquatic programming more accessible to everyone. And I think that there's an area of opportunity there. At the heart of what we do, though, is service. We believe in serving our swimmers, like, that's really why I'm here. There are other teams, there's other areas, but at the end of the day, if we're not in Hopewell, we're taking away that opportunity from our community. The closest USA team is forty minutes from here, it's more expensive, it would be hard for a lot of people socio-economically and logistically to get there. And so that's why we're here, and that's why Mr. Royster is here, is like, we want to keep this available for Hopewell, for Prince George. Like, we are out of the Hopewell Community Center, but I think Johnny spoke to this, you know, Mr. Royster being here, we serve everyone around us, and so, Mayor Parton, so we serve everyone around us in providing this service. But we want to help everybody grow into strong, confident people, we want to serve the community. This is in and out of the pool. Like, we have kids graduating, go on to swim in college, we have kids that don't swim in college, but we've graduated hundreds of people out of this program that some come back to Hopewell, some work at the community center. There have been a lot of lifeguards and employees there that came out of the swim team directly. So I think it can be a mutually beneficial relationship in terms of that, too. So I'm going to pass it to Mr. Royster, and he's going to share more specific ways that we work to serve the city.
Thank, I know our time is short, I just want to thank, uh, Mayor Parton, Vice Mayor Joyner, and, and council for the time. Uh, one, I want to thank, um, for the wonderful proclamation to, to recognize my father and his fifty years of service. I only have twenty-five years in Hopewell City Public Schools, so I got twenty-five more years to go, right? Here we are, I'm the principal at Carter G. Woodson Middle School. Born and raised, obviously, in the city. And I have an opportunity for the past twenty-plus years to be part of, uh, this year-round swim team, which I swam for also as a child and practiced at the community center. And like, uh, Coach Waterworth said, I, I have three young people, sorry, I have three children, who also swim on the team, and there's my redhead back there. And she, uh, she gave up a, a high school swim meet to, to be here for this team and, and for granddaddy, but, um, that's what we do. As part of this process, as part of our, our partnership, we really have, uh, are grateful for it. There's been many, many years, and we want it to continue. And obviously, um, there was definitely, uh, in a previous council meeting, a discussion and, and, and a vote, and, and a MOU was developed. We are asking, um, that, that kind of be reconsidered with this, uh, new council, to where currently our state is, of, of our current MOU, just stayed the same. That's basically what we're asking for. Um, we think that the partnership can still work where the pool is open at early morning hours or even, uh, evening hours, and based on, you know, lane usage. Unfortunately, um, I don't have a spreadsheet, uh, but we do have, kind of keep track. Uh, my daughter's a lifeguard for, um, um, you know, the swim team that partners with the community center. Um, and the numbers of swimmers that come during swim team hours are, are very minimal. It's a small number that, that do come. Now, maybe that's because we're there, right? But then again, um, we're more than welcome to, to be flexible in this partnership, um, to, to be what it's like. Because the pool used to open up at six o'clock in the morning, like, the community center itself, but has nothing to do with Nova South. But we're willing to provide lifeguards and staff to help. Uh, we do know that's, uh, that's a concern right now in aquatics. There's, there's not a lot of staff, and so there's staffing concerns. But what we're asking and pleading with, for us to continue this partnership, to have Nova South at Hopewell Community Center, would be to, to keep the current MOU as is, because unfortunately, and this breaks my heart to say, that if it, the MOU that was signed or agreed upon, uh, previously is still the MOU we have, then unfortunately, the partnership is over, because we, we can't function as a, a year-round competitive swim team with the number of space that we would, we would have. And we couldn't service the number of kids that we have, and that would just be a huge detriment to, um, not only our community, but our surrounding communities of, of swimmers. But the most important thing I think I'd like to share is that we want to offer other things for the city, such as swim lessons, and other opportunities to train lifeguards. I mean, there's things that, that we have, that we can do, that I think can offset some of the, the concerns that might be in play. And so that's, that's where I come to you from a heart of, of keeping the MOU currently and not using the, the one that was, I guess, decided upon in, in December. Thank you for your time, really appreciate you and, and all your support.
Uh, Councilor Holloway, and then myself?
What would it exactly be, uh, the difference between the MOUs that puts the constraints on?
Yeah, that's a great question. What has happened is the number of days and the number of lane usage, uh, is, is reduced.
Do you know that?
Oh, specific, okay. What we need are, um, we currently are, one, two, three, we're, um, we're five days a week. Uh, we're currently five days a week, we're, we're there for, um, two mornings, two mornings, um, when the, the pool's not open, and then, of course, we have so many hours in the evening time each of those nights, because we service all different kids. You can't have a, a novice swimmer who's six years old training with a seventeen-year-old trying to get a swimming scholarship. You know, it's just, it's not. So, so with, uh, in, in the presentation, I mean, the, there's a reduction of the number of days, the time usage, um, the number of lane usage is, was all part of it. We currently have, we currently use the, the pool, um, um, in terms of where we are. Like I said, five nights a week, or five days a week. And the flexibility of Saturday, because I think the pool o- only opens, or the community center only opens for, like, us, for practice, we're flexible to, you know, make that be a Friday, so there's a lot of flexibility we could definitely do moving forward. It doesn't have to be exactly like it is right now.
Uh, Ms., uh, Martina?
You can stay here, Mr. Ward. Could you give us, shed a new light on information with, um, maybe citizens' complaints or how this, uh, partnership could better serve both the swim team and our citizens? Uh, because while we want to make certain that we are available to have the partnership for the swim team, we most certainly cannot, uh, minimize the complaints of citizens altogether who are paying taxpayer dollars.
Correct, and, uh, that's part of the MOU presentation that we did in December, was that we're working to do three lanes for them, three lanes for us. So that will give us a little bit more flexibility and allow more citizens to come out. So a family that comes out during swim team practice, which is Monday through, for, uh, Thursday currently, they have five to four lanes, depending on the day they alternate, um, up until six thirty, six fifty, off the top of my head. Um, and so with that, most kids are coming out with their parents after six fifty. So if we had three lanes and they had three lanes, they could still get practicing, but unfortunately, with the number of participants they have, doesn't really work for them, but it also doesn't work for us, because we don't have the availability to allow multiple people to swim, because we either have one lane or two lanes. Does that answer your question?
Six, six fifty PM is what you're speaking of, correct?
Well, from the four, they come in at four fifty.
Do you, do you want me to just tell you the lane?
Yeah, it's four.
From four forty-five to six fifteen, on Mondays and Wednesdays, we have four lanes. And then from six fifteen to seven thirty, we have two lanes. So there's four lanes open from six fifteen until eight on those two nights. And then Friday night, we're not there at all.
Currently.
And Tuesdays, Thursdays, we have our novice groups, and we only run them on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So that's the, like, eight-in-under groups where it's tough to put a lot of them in the same lane, because they're all different levels. So on those days, we have five lanes from four forty-five until seven fifteen, and then seven fifteen until eight. It's back to having all lanes open for.
But again, at that timeframe, it's, it's a little late for the levels.
Right, and so, so something has to be done. I, I think from the perspective of the, the children on a school night can't come in after hours and, you know, so forth and so on, so it's a ground and me, I, I do not, you know, you have other councillors that may have different opinions, but, um, I could see where three and three might be complicated, but I, I, I would personally think four to two at least, um, would be my recommendation. I don't know how that will work overall, uh, but they said it's, it's almost impossible for the, the three to three to work for them.
Yeah.
Um, so I think there'd be a structure to kind of meet down the middle. I hope four and two could be something that could primarily, uh, work for everyone. And I, I like the partnership of, you know, that you are willing to continue to supply the lifeguards, because one thing that we learned, I think, from Ms. Martine's last time, that the, uh, being able to get, uh, certified, uh, lifeguards is a very difficult thing, not just here, um, but all over, uh, at this time. But, uh, most certainly, I hope we can kind of work those, uh, things out. And I couldn't, you know, beyond, of course, oh, giving lifeguards at six o'clock in the morning, I'm pretty sure the city manager is probably over there like, yeah, it's going to cost a lot more than just getting a lifeguard. So I don't know those ins and outs and the difference of what it would cost the, um, city. Do you have those numbers?
So for AM, we, we have two full-time lifeguards at the moment. Uh, we're interviewing for what we call our specialist position, which is the one that actually teaches the class of swim lessons and so forth when we're able to do so.
Not, not, not for the, I apologize, not for the lifeguards, because they said they would even provide lifeguards in the morning time at six o'clock, but I'm talking about, do you have the numbers of what else it might cost to reopen at six o'clock in the morning?
Yes, that was part of the presentation back in December, if I may have a moment. I believe that's broken down in this one, if I remember correctly. So they provide one lifeguard, we provide another, because during our risk management, it requires us to have a city employee certify lifeguard on-site. So, in order for us to open the pool up, we have to do that. So they do provide a guard for us for those timeframes that they mentioned earlier. I do request that if we potentially look at changing the MOU, that they also provide lifeguards when we request them, because unfortunately, this hasn't been something that we've been able to do, um, outside of practice time for Nova South. So we're looking at... I don't have it broken down by the hours, but as you can see, for the twenty twenty-three, I'll, I'll jump to the current one, because in twenty twenty-three, we're at, we were at a net loss of six thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars, but because of the agreement that we would move up a dollar and they would absorb some of the costs, they pick up the lifeguards for their morning session, where we didn't have to pay that any longer. Uh, we actually made a profit of nine thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars after everything was taken out.
Alright, so.
But I don't have a daily breakdown, I apologize.
Understanding that the mayor's giving comment, but I'd like to, uh, make that, that motion for the request, um, of the MOU to the, previous MOU to, I mean, MOA, excuse me, MOA, um, to be amended to four lanes for the swim team and two lanes for the citizens of Hopewell. In addition, the hours requested for the, uh, six o'clock.
So they actually, in the mornings, they actually come in at five AM, so that means my staff has to be here on-site at four thirty AM?
Who comes in at five?
Uh, the swim team comes in on Mon, on Tuesdays and Thursdays at five AM. So, uh, we have to have staff on present, on-site at four thirty AM.
So it's just the availability to the citizens as it is?
Correct.
Okay, so then I would like the MOA to reflect that.
Yeah.
Can I make a?
So I mean, a lot of, a lot of regards are high school kids.
I think. How about, I think, you know, exactly where you're going with this, so, you know, to go back and revise it, and I think to bring back something that's, you know, mutually beneficial for both parties, that we charge the city manager and her staff to work with the swim team, to bring us back a contract that, you know, they can flush out these details. And that way, we can, you know, strengthen this partnership. Because then, you know, the, I think, I think there's, there's two issues that we're working with here. You know, one, you know, with the swim team, but I think, you know, the, the second one is, how can we expand these hours for citizens? Because, I mean, I'll be the first one to admit, that's the reason why I go to the Petersburg Y, is because I know I can, you know, when I walk in there at five thirty, I can go right straight to the pool, and I can swim, you know, until I have to go to work. And I think that, you know, that offers a great benefit to citizens, especially senior citizens, because it's a low-impact sport. So, I, I think, yeah, let's, let's do that motion first, if that's, you, you're good with the friendly amendment? Okay, alright, I'll second it. Going down into, uh, discussion, we had Councillors Joyner, Ellis, and then Stokes.
Yeah, okay, I just want to say that, uh, I'm looking at this timeline, and twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-one, you know, you, morning practices started at four thirty. So, I mean, to me, it's just kind of a no-brainer. You know, it's, it has to do with the, you've got to expand the operations so that you're open at four thirty.
So with that comes additional costs.
I understand, but I think you also, I think one thing that, that I asked for, and when you first came, I want a, I want you to look at fixed costs. I, you never provided me with the fixed costs of the pool. And I think when you start looking, you've got to look at those numbers, and I want to see, I, I really want to see those numbers, okay?
So the December, uh, presentation did not answer those questions, that I broke it down by?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
Well, maybe I can chat with you offline.
Okay, that'd be fine, okay, yeah, I want to see those. But to me, I mean, I'm just looking at these up. Clearly, we've got, you know, fifteen years ago, we were at, you know, opening at four thirty, and now we're not.
So, so we were never opening at four thirty? That was specifically for swim team, correct?
That's right.
Correct.
But we just got to expand, that, you know, they've got to be able to.
So I have, again, I have two full-time lifeguard, one lives two hours away.
Okay.
So that, that means that person will be leaving their house at two AM to get here at four thirty to open up.
Well, I mean, I, I don't think we can make, I'm not sure we can make decisions like that based upon one little situation like that. I think the- I think the goal is to try and recruit somewhat recruited lifeguard who is, you know, lives locally. I, I don't think we can make a decision to stop a, a swim team because we have a situation where we just don't have a lifeguard. I think we need to be looking for another lifeguard. I understand that that's reality right now, but I, I'm just.
So I can't compete with the outside market unfortunately in regards to lifeguarding? Ms. Lauren will tell you that she takes a loss when she provides a guard because I can only pay her for her services at thirteen fifty when she's paying her guards.
Well, maybe we can work something out with H R, something like that, I don't know, a stipend or something, I don't know.
The second motion that we should do is charging the city manager and staff to, you know, research and present a plan back in, you know, thirty to sixty days on how it can extend pool hours, provide weekend service. You know, give us in a plethora of options that we can work through.
One question just in it would, is the maybe the option with H R to, since it is an obligation for the city to provide the, a lifeguard to somehow incorporate their lifeguard as a part-time employee or something.
So we did that in the past.
I was an employee of the city, so I didn't leave for ten years, and I opened the building on my own, ran practices on my own for almost ten years from four thirty to six thirty.
But to caveat that, that was a different risk manager at that timeframe, so leadership has changed throughout the timeframe. So our current risk manager has said that I got to have a city employee, which we can do, like Lauren mentioned.
That's what I was saying.
But it has to still be two lifeguards on deck and, and anybody's in that pool.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
Thanks so very much.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Ellis and then Counselor Stokes.
Okay. So listening to everybody, everybody else talk here, I think we've kind of hit, hit on some stuff that I wanted to, to touch on, but I think it's very important to come to a common agreement. I'm pretty sure Ms. Martinez, I mean, she, she's done multiple things to work things out. I've seen her, you know, in action. I know y'all in business for forty-plus years. I think y'all could come together, figure this out. I'm, I don't really want to try to figure out how to make this work and that work. I think, you know, if y'all can figure it out, bring it, bring it back to us with some cost. I think there's some, you know, stuff there that Vice Mayor Joyner said that, you know, she, she would like to have or whatever, but I think we can make it work. I think we just need to, you know, come together and, and, and get these children in there, let them swim, get these citizens in there, let them swim. I mean, if it's two lanes for citizens and there's no citizens in there, okay, use five, use six. Citizens show up, move over. I mean, I, I don't know how much more simpler that could be. I mean, so let's, let's try to do that.
All right, Counselor Stokes.
Um, Mr. Ellis just.
Thank you.
Mentioned what I was going to mention, but I would like to know the numbers while you're crunching along with the numbers you're going to provide with, like to Vice Mayor Joyner. I'd like to know the difference between the swim team and how many citizens are actually using the pool during the times that you all are having, having this, this. Without me giving it a title, but I'd like to know how many citizens are being affected. So while you're crunching.
I think they have those numbers because lifeguard's tracked.
Again, we're, you know, we're, we're coming on new January first. Can you please provide them?
So when we do the tracking of the pool, we, we count swim team in that. So we can start documenting how many citizens are there as well, like completely outside of those four or five lanes on those nights. But it's going to take me some, a while to grab that down, is that okay?
And that, that, that concerned me, yeah, that was, that's where I was going.
Because, yeah, the majority of the pool is being operated by swim teams.
And then there are members, there are citizens of Hopewell on your team. So I'd like to know, they might be able to swim at all lanes, but at any rate, but giving it back to the city manager and for you all to work this out, I think you all can come to an amicable agreement.
Okay. All right, so the motion on the floor is to charge the city manager and staff to work together on a contract that is mutually beneficial for both the city and for the swim team.
So moved.
All right, well, we, that was already the motion on the floor. I'll let you get the next one. Roll call, please.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, is there a motion to charge the city manager and staff to present a plan in the, sometime in the next sixty days on how to extend the pool hours and provide weekend hours?
Point, point, I thought, point of information, I thought we were included that in the last, when you did.
That was just, that was just the contract.
That's on the contract.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Second motion for.
Yeah. All right. I'm, I'm letting you take it.
So in this motion, we go get these numbers, right?
Yeah, yeah, they've got to provide us numbers. This is just to, you know, you know, formally charge the city manager and her staff to present a plan back to us.
So moved.
Okay, all right, motion's been made by Counselor Stokes and seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, is there a motion to extend the meeting until we finish our regular business items and our closed session? All right, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving back to our public hearing items, number three, Mr. Ward.
So tonight's word public hearing is a zoning amendment request to add churches as an allowable use to the R one A residential district. The applicant for this particular amendment is the Restored Hope Church of the Nazarene. The R one A residential district is, encompasses portions of wards four, five, and seven, and it currently does not allow churches as an allowable use. In terms of this public hearing, we complied with all state requirements in terms of notification. This map here shows generally the, the area in blue, which is like a navy blue, is the R one A residential district in the city. And just as a reminder, when you add a use to a district, you are adding it as an allowable use throughout the entire district. So churches are in allowable use in all residential districts in the city except for R one and R one A. Again, you may remember from my work session presentation, I tried to do some research on why that is and really wasn't able to come up with any good conclusion, but it's been that way for quite a long time, quite a few decades. Churches are in allowable use in all commercial districts in the city currently. And there's a, the church existed on Smithfield Avenue in R one A for many years without any issue. There's also an existing church in the R one A, it's Baptist church that's down the street from where the Nazarene church was. And just as a reminder, this church was there for quite a few decades and it burned down in twenty nineteen. So this is a map here showing the location of where the church once stood there at the corner of Sherwood. And again, there is a church that's currently located at twenty-nine oh one Norfolk. These are the areas shown in the city. So on the left, that's the R one A district once again. And then on the right, all the dots represent all the areas in the city where churches are permitted currently, under our current ordinance. So staff really sees no reason to deny adding churches to this particular district. In fact, we support approval of the request to add churches to Section A of Article three dash A residential low-density district as an allowable use. We did receive one public comment in favor, and that was at the planning commission's public hearing that was held on December fifth. We did not receive any comments opposing the request. So planning commission recommended four to zero after their public hearing for approval of adding churches to this district, and that was held on December fifth once again. I'm available for any questions if you have any. The applicant is here this evening as well if you have questions for the applicant.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ward or the applicant?
How would this affect the overall zoning? You stated that it'll affect the city overall if we vote to accept this, this request. Overall for the R one and R, the, the, the R one A district, how would it affect if we were to accept?
So if you, if you vote to approve this request this evening, churches will become a byright use in the R one A district, which is according to the map I was showing you, would be that particular portion of the city. So we are not suggesting that it would be a conditional use permit, use or anything, it would be byright. But in terms of, I know that, I feel some questions about churches just moving into a, a structure that was formerly a house, say, would be an example. That would be a change of use, so our development standards would kick in, they would have to have off-street parking, all of that. So the chances of a church just moving into a house and converting it to a church are slim to none. But that's really how this would affect the R one A, is that it would become an allowable byright use.
So what I'm hearing is, we won't have, what I'm not looking for to have is just churches popping up on every corner or persons. Like I've seen other candidates where they are in houses, like you said.
Right, yeah, that, that's a legitimate concern, but again, our development standards, because if, if a house changes from residential use to a church or institutional use, that's when the development standards kick in, so they'd be required to develop a site plan, they would have to have off-street parking, would have to be inspected by both the fire marshal and the building, building official. They would have to have a certain number of egress, handicap accessibility, all of those things would have, would kick in. And I mean, honestly, a house is not conducive to any of those. Or what was norm, formerly a house would not be conducive to that change in use. So it wouldn't be approved is really what the end result would be. Now, these folks are proposing to build a new church at the location where their church stood for forty-plus years.
And overall for taxation?
Churches are exempt on real estate taxes, yes, ma'am.
Will they continue to be, that's what I'm saying, will they continue to be exempt from real estate taxes?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other lights, we're going to move into the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up for this public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve the request to add churches to Section A of Article three A residential low-density district as an allowable use?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Day, seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing number four, Ms. English.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Janelle English, Director of Finance for Hopewell City Public Schools. We come to you tonight requesting approval of supplemental appropriation, amending our budget this year by a total amount of three million six hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. This is due to additional federal grants, state grants, local grants, and corrections we needed to make to our balances. Some background information, you approved, City Council approved the school's budget back in May, May twenty-eighth to twenty-four, and you also approved the first supplemental appropriation on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Since then, we've received additional grants, as I said, and we had to adjust our carryover amounts and adjust our, correct our beginning balances to the budget. So the carryover amounts we had to correct were for Title One, Title Two, Three, Four, Virginia All-In Funding, Year-Round Schools Grant, School Construction Funds, Gear Up Grant, Stronger Connections, Perkins Grant, Cares Funds, ISAP Grant, and Indirect Costs. We did receive some new grants, which were Project Hope, Title One School Improvement, Apprenticeship Grant, Apprenticeship Program Grant, the DBHDS State Grant, which is a mental health grant, the School Security Equipment Grant, and a grant from the Cameron Foundation. These grants increased our operating fund by three million three hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. Moving on to the textbook fund, we just had to correct our beginning balance down by thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. And then we had to correct our food services beginning, beginning balance. We had to increase that by three hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and one dollars. So after all these changes, the total change to our budget would be an increase in the amount of three million six hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. And in your packet, you should also have copies of the general resolutions where the school board approved these grants, as well as our budget that was originally approved, the changes that need to be made, and the adjusted budget broken down by state, federal, other sources, and the local revenue. And the last budget, the last spreadsheet in there, which is up on the screen now, is just the original budget and each of our supplemental appropriations split out by fund. So the ones highlighted in orange are the ones we are requesting approval of tonight. The total is in yellow, and if this goes through, our vast school board budget in total would be seventy-eight million seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Okay, are there any questions before we open up the public hearing? Okay, seeing no lights. Public hearing is now open. I don't have anyone signed up for this public hearing tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. All right, is there a motion to approve the resolution to amend the F Y twenty-five Hopewell Public Schools supplemental appropriation as presented?
So moved.
Second that.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to R one.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, I'm, I'm happy to be back up here. I will keep this very brief in light of the time. I come to you tonight asking for the adoption of the Economic Development Strategic Plan that I have presented in work session and then presented again on January the fourteenth. And I'm really excited to come to unite, seeking this adoption in advance of our first economic development summit in the city of Hopewell. It's going to be held next Thursday, February the sixth, at nine thirty A M at the John Randolph Foundation. Randolph Foundation. I have sent invitations to each of one of you, and I hope that you can come for some or, or all of the day to that exciting economic development summit. It is also open to the public, and we have broadcast it through our, our media outlets and, and FOIA so that the public can come as well. I just want to remind the public to sign up if they're coming, if they'd like to, to eat the food that we're going to have, and because of the limitation of the room, we're going to be cutting off the total occupants because of the, the code for the room. So there's still some, some spots available, about twenty, twenty-six spots available as of a few minutes ago. So the Economic Development Strategic Plan, it's in, it's in your package, it's fourteen pages long. I know most of you have read it, but I'm, I'm here to ask for the action, which is adoption of the plan or adoption with any, any changes or revisions.
Is there a motion to approve the Economic Development Strategic Plan?
So move.
Motion's been made by councillor Harris and seconded by councillor Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Councillor Day?
Yes.
Councillor Stokes?
Yes.
Councillor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Councillor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Councillor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving on to R two, Ms. Jordan.
I'm here to, to ask that you pass a resolution to extend the deadline for the payment of tax on public service corporations, tangible personal property, and other, other than machinery and tools. Whereas chapter four, two of the Hopewell City Charter and fifteen point two, one one zero one of the Code of Virginia, that all powers in the city of Hopewell and to be exercised by its city council unless the powers has otherwise been expressly delegated to another. And whereas fifty-eight point one, thirty-nine sixteen of the Code of Virginia permits the governing body to establish due dates for the payment of locals' taxes by ordinance. And whereas ordinance two zero zero six dash zero eight passed by Hopewell City Council on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and six, established the beginning with tax year two thousand and six, and for subsequent tax years, taxes accruing to the city from public service corporations and on all tangible personal property of the machinery and tools subject to taxation by the city shall accrue annually at the beginning of the tax year on January first and shall be paid in full to the city treasurer no later than February fifteenth of the following year. And whereas fifty-eight...
I'm just, I'm going to help save you some time.
Okay.
Mr. Kalas, I think you said that there was a couple of things on here that you might want to tweak?
Yeah, I did, I mentioned that to Ms. Jordan, and I think she agreed. It was just in the first paragraph, a couple of things with respect to the charter and the code section, but nothing substantive with respect to the extension.
Okay.
So my only ask would be that if you approve the resolution, that we just have an opportunity to make the changes, much like you did earlier.
Okay, all right. So is there a motion to approve the penalty and interest extension resolution with the legal changes from Mr. Kalas?
The fact is...
Yep, okay. Motion's Mr. Harris and seconded by Ms., councillor Stokes. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councillor Day?
Yes.
Councillor Stokes?
Yes.
Councillor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Councillor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Councillor Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bennett?
Good evening. This is my third time to you, presenting to you tonight, and I have to say that it is trial by fire for the new council, but Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of Council, I'm here tonight and joined by Mr. Greg Mustrick. If you'll stand over here, Greg, so that they can hear you on the microphone. So we were going to do this, I was going to do a part, and he was going to do a part, and I was going to come back. We're going to stand here together for, for efficiency, and I'm going to drive the, the vote. So this, this presentation that we're going to move efficiently through, this is a presentation which is for a, requesting a resolution for a re, let me just get my words right, a revitalization area be designated by this body for a parcel in Hopewell for a mixed-use development. And we're going to get into the details of that here in just a minute. Just to get you oriented on what parcel we are, we are referring to, I'm going to pull up here on my screen this, this map. So the parcel is this parcel outlined in red, and I've given you a couple of landmarks. So the Moose Lodge is, is to plan north, and the Food Line is to plan south. This parcel is, is a four acre parcel, and it's zoned commercial corridor. And so everything we're talking about tonight is, is approved by right in the ordinance. There's nothing that they're asking for that's any type of construction that would be outside of the ordinance that we have. And so this is the parcel that is proposed for this new mixed-use development, and I'm going to ask Mr. Greg Mustrick to go through this presentation briefly about their company, the Woda Cooper Companies, and this particular project, which is the Wells Point. So you just stand right here, I'll, I'll change the slides, you just say next slide.
All right. Sounds good to me.
And we'll just go right through it.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for having us tonight. I'm Greg Mustrick, I'm a vice president with Woda Cooper Companies. Woda Cooper Companies give you a brief history. We're an integrated company with design, development, construction, and property management. We've been around for over thirty-five years. We operate in the Midwest, the East Coast, and South, and the Mid-Atlantic. We have over three hundred and thirty affordable housing developments and over sixteen thousand units throughout our portfolio. That service around thirty, thirty thousand residents. In total, our investments are around one point five billion dollars in affordable housing. We are long-term owners of our properties, so, you know, when we develop something, we're building to a higher quality because we're going to own it for the long term. We're not going to come in, build it, and then sell the development to somebody else. All right, next slide, thank you. Throughout Virginia, we have thirteen affordable housing developments dating back to two thousand twelve. We have five hundred and seventy-five units constructed, and around one hundred and seventy-nine units that are in development or under construction at this time. We also own and operate Freedman Point here in Hopewell. Tonight, we're here about a new development called Wells Point. It's located on Cousins Avenue at Old Woodlawn Street, which was described a little bit earlier. We are proposing a mixed-use development with fifty-one units of residential housing and around six thousand square feet of commercial space. We'll include nine one bedrooms, thirty-two bedrooms, and twelve three bedrooms in this development. The rent and income will be restricted through the housing tax credit program, and that'll be for individuals and households that are earning thirty percent of the area median income, up to eighty percent of the area median income. Just for reference, so up to the eighty percent AMI would be for an individual around sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, for two-person household around seventy thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, third, three-person household seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and forty, and four-person would be around eight, eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. I think the slide that we have up now, again, kind of describes the location of the property, which is located near commercial and residential uses with a lot of amenities nearby for our residents. The next slide is, you know, the preliminary site plan that we have proposed so far. You'll notice some lines throughout here, there's a lot of utility easements, there's a flood plain that we're dealing with, which may be one of the reasons why it hasn't been developed in the past. And, you know, one of the things that we are proposing community amenity-wise, we'll have a community room, onsite property manager with an office for them, onsite maintenance tech, we'll have a fitness center, a general office, a playground, outdoor seating area, and as I mentioned earlier, we'll also have the commercial space as well. So one of the things I'd like to do is talk to you about the, the process here, you know, and, and what we're looking at. So the federal government allocates tax credits to the state. Virginia Housing receives those tax credits, and then they create a qualified allocation plan, which talks about how they want to allocate the tax credits to build affordable housing and certain attributes that they would be looking for. So they create a score sheet to go along with the qualified allocation plan or QAP. So out of a hundred points, you would want to score a hundred points. It's a very competitive process, so we're competing against other developers throughout the state for these tax credits. One of the ways to score highly, you know, is by obtaining the resolution that we're here for tonight. We can get points for obtaining a, a resolution for designating this site in a revitalization Wells Point, you know, it'll, it'll help out the area by developing a vacant parcel that has been vacant for over thirty years. We plan to make a twenty point three million dollar investment within the community in building this development, which would add an estimated fifty-four thousand dollars in taxes, in real estate taxes to your community on an annual basis. In over ten years, with projected three percent annual increases, that amount to over six hundred thousand dollars compared to very minimal real estate taxes today. In addition, we like to hire locally for the development, construction of the property, and then if we can't do that, we'll go to regionally and then in the state. So we want to try to keep the income and hire locally as much as we can as we build this development. The benefit will be not just adding residential housing units, but also the commercial space, which has received interest with a healthcare provider and also potential daycare providers. So with that, I thank you again for having us tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Okay. First line I saw was councillor Holloway, followed by councillor Stokes.
All right, so this is sad, I saw two thousand and twenty-five when I'm in, two properties in Chester, and last time I spoke with one of your representatives, they were supposed to be done about September of last year, is that what their property, those properties not finished?
They are about to be. So they're, they're basically done. We have had issues getting electrical switch gears to the development, which, if any are familiar, there's been a backlog, and it's very, very hard to get. So, and then the hurricanes hit, and then those got backlogged again, so we've finally gotten them at the site. So we are about ready to open up. I, we may be occupied on the first phase of it, or, you know, starting occupancy, but that is, we have had definitely some delays from COVID, from labor, and also just supply issues really related to a lot of the COVID issues that had happened.
That's what I was wondering, I was wondering if you were talking about things that's happening there, and then the second act, the last time I was speaking to the factory, you were speaking to the factory?
Yeah, so we're a general contractor, so Woda Construction is who was, was the general contractor, Woda Construction. And then we subcontract with subcontractors, you know, locally or regionally to help build it. I, I don't know who the subcontractors are that we use because I'm on the development side, but, but yeah, Woda Construction is a G C.
And Mayor, I have, I have just a few more statements after this question session before the first motion.
Okay. Councillor Stokes?
This development, and I have a chance to write over and look at the phone sign, and it's near those, sitting on train, train tracks or near the train tracks, are there any protections put in place for the children that this more path, for the family developer or...
So with, you're talking about like a fence or something like that?
Not just a fence, because children will climb up.
Yeah, the, the existing tree line that's adjacent to the, the train tracks, we're not going to be removing any of the trees there. On, onsite where we have a playground, that'll be fenced in playground as well. And so we have a few other developments near train tracks, some a little bit closer than this, but we, we haven't had any issues or incidents with the train tracks. But I, I understand your concern, having two kids of my own, so.
Please, if you would, make some concessions.
Yeah.
For the safety of our children.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that, and, you know, I can talk with our contractor and architect too, to see what we can do.
And so in your presentation, you put, but without special HUD financing, the project will not move forward. So have you received a special HUD financing?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's federal financing, not through, through HUD, it's just the, the government, which, so we are going to apply mid-March of this year for the financing. So we'll apply in March, and then in July, we should hear if we get the funds for the development. If we do, we're looking at, you know, an eight-month process to take it from a, a concept to getting building permits and getting ready to close. And from there, it would probably be another ten months to twelve months to construct the property and then occupy it.
So you feeling pretty confident with this new federal administration that you'll be able to?
Yes, yes, we do. Yeah, th, this program's been along for a long time, and as of right now, we don't see any issues. It's, it's really, you know, the states get the tax credits, and it's, it's really us competing with these other developers. So ensuring that we have a high score so that we can win in allocation of tax credits. We feel this property is very competitive and would compete well against other deals that would be competing in the Richmond MSA area.
Well, I've had the opportunity to follow you, and I know most of your awareness that you've just put in on my housing specialist.
Okay.
And so even retired, I still follow people that are doing, doing my, I was a junior. I don't lie, but I just keep up with all the people that you all follow. I think also that it's close to the shopping center, and we were just talking about that area of town earlier, and I think we're going to improve as far as putting taxes and putting money into our system on that side of town in the north side of our community.
You're, you're welcome.
Councillor Ellis and then myself?
Yes. On the loan, you said it's a HUD loan. Is there any...
So I, I prepared the CAF, which, which the call for action, I used that terminology. They did not prepare that, and I, I basically misused the term there, so that's my error.
Okay, let's, let's just say whatever loan you get, is there going to be any special considerations to the loan that specifies there are certain things you use this for or, or, or that goes in there?
No, it's the, the tax credits, we get those, and then we sell those to an investor or syndicator, which gives us the equity to build this development. So this is a, the private-public partnership aspect would mean that those tax credits that we receive can only be used for developing affordable housing. We can't, we can't develop anything else. And then with that, there is a minimum fifteen-year compliance period with the state in which we usually extend that, it's an affordable, it's a, an affordable commitment. So if to keep the apartments and the units and the rents affordable for at least fifteen years, we extend that out to typically forty-five years total, so that, you know, at the end of fifteen years, we're not going in converting it to market rate, you know, and, and we have, I would say, over our thirty-five-year history now, a hundred of our properties have gone through that, where we've gone past the fifteen-year compliance period, and what we do is we go back, we reapply for tax credits to renovate the units, and then keep them again for another affordable housing development.
Okay. Have you, have you been in Freedman Point?
I have, yeah.
Lately?
I, I have not lately, no.
I don't think it's a very favorable place.
Okay.
For, for, for a lot of the citizens. And I'm, that does not turn me on as far as with Freeman Point. And just me personally, I'm just speaking for myself. I'm not ready to have another Freeman Point. That, that's why I had these couple of questions or whatever. It's very taxing, that, that particular place is, on public safety. And outside looks great. Inside, it is, it is horrible.
I, I know we have changed our, our management team there recently, and we have a new team in place, and they've been doing a lot of work there. So, I, I'm not sure of the condition. I, I came in today, I was going to drive by and.
Well, it was just a question. I, I didn't know.
Could I, could I respond to that?
Sure.
In preparation for this meeting, Chief Rupert and myself toured the property today. We walked the property today, and he remarked that it was in, in much, much better condition than it had been in the past. We actually saw several maintenance people who were doing work, freshly painted all the corridors. There was a couple little areas that had issues, but he, he, you know, remarked that it was much different than what it had been in, in years past before the management company changed, or the manager changed.
Manager, yeah.
Okay. Well, all right.
And if there's issues, or if you're noticing things, I can give you my contact information too. I work with the owners, so if, if it's not up to what you believe it should be, I want to resolve that.
Right, right. I understand that.
Yeah.
I, I, I have a vision, myself, as a counselor, on what that corridor out there is. My vision that I, and, and, you know, when something different than what I'm really hoping for comes up, I, I have questions, and, you know, I mean, I, it's just, you know, my vision of another Freeman Point, or another hotel, or something out there, is just not my personal vision.
Yeah.
It might be the six more over here, yes, but that's, that's, that's the only reason why I'm asking these questions.
Yeah, and, and I know too, we'll be working with, you know, the planning department, everyone, make sure our elevations will be, they'll be different than Freeman Point too. So, I believe the look will be different, especially with commercial on the first floor as well.
Okay.
And, and, you know, if you have a commercial tenant, there's even more upkeep that we're doing, because that's a very valuable tenant to have.
Well.
Because they service it.
With multi-story deals comes other requests from other agencies, because you have multi-story, and you keep multi-story stuff. It, you know, you, you're going to eventually be asked for other things in the city from other people, and it, it becomes that too. So, that's, I'm just looking ahead on what it's going to be, and what can be down the road, on what we're going to be asked to supply people with. So, that was all.
Okay.
Got myself, and then Councilor Holloway. So, last week, we had a really good presentation by our finance department and Davenport Investments, who are our financial advisors, and they did a diagnostic run for the city on our bond rating, and showcased, you know, what different economic factors are going on in the city, areas that we need to improve upon, and areas that we're, that we're doing really well on. And one of the focus areas, or areas that we could improve upon, is, you know, raising up the median income here for the city of Hopewell. And so, you know, I understand that other localities are doing things where you have, you know, 80 to 90% are market-rate apartments, and then, you know, the other 10 are for more affordable housing. And, you know, what I would, you like to see is something like that done, because I think that, one, yes, you're putting a great investment into the city. That helps us, you know, with the, you know, the overall quote value of the city when it comes to that assessment, but we need to work on that median income. That's probably, you know, I, I'd say probably weakest, if not in the bottom three weakest areas that the city is really having. And so, you know, if you, you know, are willing to, you know, commit to, you know, a 90-10 split, or, you know, an 80-20, you know, that's something more that, you know, I can get, you know, on board with, which is, you know, what other localities are doing. But to do 100% affordable housing, it's, we're, we're not going to move that needle up, and we won't be able, once we get our bond rating back, we won't be able to borrow money at lower interest rate. Our debt service, you know, will, you know, be higher, which means if we don't have economic growth, then we're going to have to increase taxes to pay for, you know, the debt service. So, would you be willing to do, you know, a 90-10, 80-20 split?
That I'd have to talk to my underwriter about to see if that would be feasible. I, I know that we would prefer to do 100%. I believe in, my understanding, the area median income that we're looking at is, for a four-person household, is around $110,000. And so, you know, providing units up to $88,000, that, there's a wide range of incomes that we can service at this development. And so, it's, I mean, that's, that's kind of, you're almost up there to the market rate levels for income-wise. You're probably, you know, that $30,000 away from the area median income.
Yeah, that, that's, but the numbers that you, you presented, or, you know, earlier, they're not reflected of, you know, what we're, you know, we're trying to, you know, rise to.
Yeah. I, and I understand that. I think that would be something that I would need to talk to my underwriter about. I would prefer, if we can, you know, to keep it as affordable. You know, we, when we have to add in the market rate aspect to it, which in, in the affordable realm, and what we're doing, and our competitors, really, they're all 100, they're 100% affordable housing. You know, that's how we get our money to build our developments, and for, when we're adding in units that aren't affordable, we have to find other financial sources to basically finance and build those units, as that's not covered under the tax credit, credits we get.
I mean, me personally, I mean, again, I can't speak for all the council, but I would, you know, rather you go back and talk, you know, with your folks, and see if that's something that you can present to us. Because if, you know, we're, you know, going out of our way to, you know, declare this for you to make your application more competitive, I think that you should, you know, come to us with something that, you know, can really, you know, basically lift all the tides for us economically.
Yeah, and I guess, instead of like the 90, you know, 10, or, you know, is something adding in one or two units, is that something more feasible? You know, I just don't know if we can get very many more than that.
I mean, I, I would like to, I mean, again, you know, go talk with your folks and see what you can do. You know, I'm, what, the areas that I'm comfortable with is, you know, the 90-10, 80-20, which is, you know, what other localities, you know, I've, I've seen do. Again, you know, if you're not able to do that, and you're able to increase it up some, I'd still like to see that. But, I mean, again, 100%, I, I just, I, I just, I think it's going to end up, you know, not helping us in the long term.
Okay.
All right, uh, Councilor Holloway?
Uh, I, I, this thing is running. I definitely go for, we on opposite side of the scale. Some, you know, the, the councillors respectfully that have spoken before me, mostly all make or have income that's probably six figures and more, come from more wealthy background than I have, or my constituents have, probably represented here tonight. I guess not represented here tonight, but by me, so I'm going to speak on their behalf. I, I think that this build is something necessary. When, when you're talking about respectfully what the mayor spoke on tonight about having this income here, there are already people here that need affordable housing. Not talking about people that's just going to come into the city, but there are people in our city right now that is in dire need of affordable housing, and we don't want to just push people out of the city because of that space. But they are needing this type of development structurally. It, it is grotesque to me, and I think it's absolutely ridiculous when you come from a perspective of knowing the needs of our city, to speak from only a wealthy mindset to say, you know, what you're talking about, you're not even talking about public housing, or anything of that nature. You're talking about affordable housing. There, there's numbers that support the simple fact that you're, you have rental agencies now asking for three times the income. You know, I, I looked and researched information that the request for a lot of rental properties now have more qualification asked than it is to purchase a home now, which is a very scary thing. It forces and drives people out of our city that have been here for a long time. Talking about a tax base, we increased here in the city of Hopewell, and the city manager can correct me if my numbers are a little off, but we requested for a higher raise in tax, taxes last year, when the year before last, of the assessment value of property had already gone up in Virginia, which basically backed door the amount of money that we had in our city. And there were councillors screaming out, hey, we have to raise the taxes, because we need more money, and we are under budget, and so forth and so on. When we left out with a surplus, I would think of like $7 million. People support what they want to support, and don't support what they don't want to support. There's a need in Hopewell for this type of community, and I would hope that councillors would not just think about their own personal background. I am all here for the overall development of Hopewell. That doesn't mean that we have to kick those out as we welcome some in. There's plenty of space. As Counselor Ellis had spoke about in, in, in closed session, there's a lot of, a lot more space in that area where you're choosing to build, where other type of housing community can come. But I think the mix would be appropriate. These are not, again, public houses where people are going there with no income, but a minimum income, you said, at least about 30% less, less than before. So, I'm in full support of that. It is already, the, the newer councillor, Councilor Ellis wasn't here during the last presentation, but when your, your company already came in and spoke to the fact of all of the developments that had happened last year, within about a year's time with Freeman Point, including taking out carpet, changing the floor around, adding more cameras to that property, getting, getting rid of all issues. And that is what we should welcome in this city, those type of landlords. Somebody, like you said, that has billions of dollars of investments under them, long-term people who come in with safety in mind. Y'all put cameras additionally in Freeman Point. That was definitely to a plus. And it's not, I, I didn't hear any statistics about, you know, any issue happening there, other than people unfortunately not being able to be blessed with, as a trust fund baby, you know, to move into that type of development. How that works.
And, and I think too, with, with our development errors maybe too, zoning-wise, you know, are we at, are we kind of capped at that 51 units right now, you know, with the density?
Not necessarily. The, the cap that brought us to 51 was really the amount of tax credits that we're able to get on a single development is really going to matter for that unit count.
So, it, I, I think it'd be, it would be really hard to add in the market rate aspect of it with those units at this time, I think. You know, if there's a way to do it, I'll, I'll try to find out, but I know that the amount of credits we can get even just for the 51 units, you know, and the tax credits, we'd be limited at that development. And if we were to add in market rate and reduce our, our light tech units, then the deal really isn't financially feasible, just because we don't have money to build the, the extra units for the market rate. And we're also constricted with the size of our site too, just in regards to the floodplain that surrounds it. We also have a lot of utility easements, and then the railroad easement as well. And that really limits how much you can develop on this site, which may be one of the reasons it hasn't been developed in the past. I'm not quite sure, but, you know, it, it, it's very limited to what the highest and best use would be. And, and we believe this would be, you know, fit a need for this community, and, you know, we're, we're willing to work with you guys, you know, build a high-quality development.
Is there a motion to charge the Woda Group and staff to present a revised plan with a split of affordable housing and market rate ratio, and bring it back to council for consideration?
So move.
Let's not second it. All right. Is there any discussion? Councilor Holloway?
Yes, I'd like to hear what, uh, the economic development thing.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I asked for just, I asked for just another comment before the motion was made.
That's all right. You go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So, I just wanted to make sure that council understood what the ask was tonight very clearly. So, that the ask that the Woda Group is asking is for the designation of this parcel as a revitalization area. And, and that's the only thing, based on the Virginia Code section here. This does not make the project go forward or not go forward. So, so basically, if you don't do this, it doesn't matter from the standpoint of they're still going to proceed with, with the, the application and everything.
Right.
What this is, is a very small percentage that it would change the ask, are the points. Okay, so I just, I just want to make sure that we were all on the same page. What they're proposing is a by right development. There's nothing that they're proposing is not in our zoning. It's all, it's all, there's no special exception here. So, that, so the, the statement is, and what your actions are, whether or not you, you help with those few extra points or not, that, that's really done. And, and, and I just want to say, as the Director of Vietnam and Tourism, I want to say why I personally support the project and ask that you do this. Whether, whatever, whatever the motion is, I just want to get that out there. So, my position is spent a lot of time on this parcel for the last year and a half, trying to get it. The owner called me a year and a half ago and said, I want to put this all in a conservation easement. I can no longer continue to pay taxes on this property. I want to put it on a conservation easement, because that way, I'm not, for 30 years, I've been paying taxes on this property. And I said, let me try to help you find somebody that can build something there that will add value. So, I see this as a mixed-use development that gives me 6,000 square feet of commercial. I've already got a daycare center operator that wants to build a daycare center there for families of Fort Greg Adams. I see it as essentially probably the only thing that can go there because the deed restriction for the hotel that was put on when the owner sold the adjacent property to Candlewood Suites. And I see it getting rid of 51 slum lords in Hopewell. It's an opportunity for 51 families to move out of this decrepit housing that is just not where it needs to be, and gives them an opportunity to stay in, in Hopewell. And that opens up additional opportunities for us to do redevelopment in some of our other areas. So, that's the reason why I support the project. Also, you know, my son just got married in October, and he works for Atlantic Constructors Incorporated, and him and his, his new, you know, bride, they qualify, you know, to basically have a, a one-bedroom apartment here. So, for these reasons, I support this, this, which is unpopular as economic development, I should say, I don't want any new houses. I just want essentially all buildings and businesses, move all the people out, and let's just get businesses in here. But I think there's some, but I think there's some logical reasons to think about it. So, I just want to make sure you were well informed on what the ask was for tonight, and what the impact of it was, whatever that is. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you. Roll call, please.
Councilor Day?
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
Oh, the motion is to charge the Woda Group and staff to present a revised plan with a split of affordable housing and market rate percentage, and to bring back to council for future consideration.
Can I ask a question?
Are we legally able to require an outside agency to bring us something back, other than their volunteered?
They can, they can not bring you something back, and if you pass the motion, and they don't bring you something back, then there's nothing for you to vote on. So, it's up to them.
So, it seems like it's unnecessary, because they're not the department that we're demanding. He already said that he would bring, you know, he would go talk to them about it, but I don't see why the motion would be necessary that we demand anybody. We can't demand an outside entity that doesn't make sense.
I didn't say demand. Yeah, ask it. I mean, if they want the extra few points, and we have something that we want, it behooves them to come to us?
Those points don't work for, for the type of grant request that they're asking for.
Yeah, I think, so we're asking for, it'll give us five extra points would help, which would help make us more.
Five extra points, but you gave specificity. Would those five extra points still be gained with 80-20?
Would they? The issue, it, it would be different. So, it would count for the affordable housing side, but the market rate side, really, it wouldn't be impacted, because we need to find a way to finance that side of the development. And I, I guess, I, I guess I'd like to ask, I don't know if, if you're able to change, like, would we be able to vote tonight on the keeping it 100% affordable? I just don't know if it's going to be financially feasible for us to add in 10 market rate development. Ten uh market rate developments here. And, and really, we would just be asking for a vote on the revitalization. I'm just concerned that it, it's really not going to work out for us.
I mean, we can vote on it. Um, but I mean, I think you might be a little bit better off, you know, trying to come back and bring something to us.
Yeah. Um, I, I would request if you could vote on it. Um, I, I just. I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure we're, we're not going to be able to make it work with the market rate component, knowing. Um, everything I do about the tax credit and the financial feasibility of also building market rate units. Because we don't, you know, we don't have the financing for that aspect of it.
So, Mr. Harris, you have the floor.
I'm trying to get an understanding about what the mayor's motion is. To you, is it a deal breaker? With him to, the motion that he's making, if it's bad, is that a deal breaker for what it is that you're saying?
It, it, it is. I mean, in all of our Virginia developments, we don't have market rate housing um included in those developments. Uh, because we don't have a financial source to pay for those units. Um, the, the tax credits that we're applying for, were a hundred percent affordable. When we get the tax credits and we sell them to the investors, that gives us the money then to build uh the, the, the affordable housing developments.
So are you saying that in the, in your Virginia properties, what he's asking for, you've never seen is affordable housing?
With, with our company, I mean, and the majority of our competitors are building a hundred percent affordable. Unless they're up in like northern Virginia where they have really, really high rents. You know, their highest rents you can get in the nation. So they'll add in different components, um, because of also some of the extra grants that they get in those areas. They may require it as well. Um, but in uh the rest of this state, when we're building affordable housing. Uh, we aren't including market rate housing.
Seem a bit discriminatory, you know, saying that Hopewell has the need of affordable housing that. Push against something that our citizens here need, you know, whether low income or high income. We all pay tax dollars and I, I just think it's a sad and ridiculous. Asking for a revitalization, not even asking for the approval of this. You could go forward with or without this.
Yeah, we're, that's all we're asking for tonight is just a resolution to designate this site in a revitalization area.
I like when these type of topics come up because it gives the people opportunity to see how people really feel about it. I think.
And also showcases a few that have near foresight into the future economic growth of, for the city of Hopewell. Roll call please.
Councillor Day.
The motion is, uh, the mo- uh, motion that I called for, which was to charge them to do the uh split and bring something back to council.
Councillor Day.
Yes.
Councillor Stokes?
No.
Councillor Holloway?
No.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Councillor Harris?
No.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Councillor Alice?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Okay. All right. Well, you know, as promised, you all put your motion up for a vote. Is there a motion to present the resolution, uh, to accept the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Okay, motion been made by councillor Holloway and seconded by councillor Stokes. Roll call please.
Do you have an actual discussion?
Okay, you've already talked uh over three times on this subject.
Yeah, but this is a different.
Yeah, it's, it's on the subject. Roll call please.
On this subject, is there allowable discussion on this vote?
Yeah, I think you're entitled to discuss motion by motion. It's a separate motion. There should be discussion.
Quite discussing. Could you reiterate for uh the audience and people and so it can go on record, the actual uh. Information about the request tonight for this resolution, please?
It's requesting. The resolution that's in your packet that you're voting on now is where a city council has the authority under the Virginia code. To designate this parcel as a revitalization area, which is, uh, would support. The affordable housing project and other, and other projects on this parcel. But they're asking for it for this. Only affects this parcel, no other parcels uh with this resolution.
Thank you. All right, councillor Harris.
So if we vote to make this a revitalization area. That mean that we won't deal with Woda, right?
No, no. All that does is it, it gives Woda five more points towards their hundred points of the application they submit.
Yeah, but what, what, what they're proposing for us, right? And what it is that we asked them to do to come back with a better figure, right? And they said that won't be beneficial for them.
Well, the two, the two are in, the, the two are not mutually exclusive, right?
Right.
The revitalization area, we designate it, Woda could ride off into the sunset. It's still, it's still designated a revitalization area. Um, someone else could come along and try something else and reap the benefits of that. Um, so it's just a designation that enables them. They already have points because of the census tract that's there. This just gives them a few, you know what this says? This says city council recognizes that without this action. The parcel's just going to do what it's done for thirty years, which is just sit there and, you know, and give us about six thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. In person, uh, you know, real estate tax revenue.
Okay, I'm just trying to get an understanding because, you know, if, if we going to make, vote to. Make or not make this revitalization area, right? That's one thing. Whether or not they going to do any development on it is something else. Am I right?
Yes, they can use your action tonight to support their application and get five more points. So let's say they could achieve all the points, they could get to ninety-five without, ninety-five out of a hundred. If we don't give them this action, they couldn't get a hundred out of a hundred. I'm just using hypothetical numbers, right? So that, but that, that's, and, and, and the funding is divvied up based on other, other municipalities. That are submitting or other developers are submitting to build stuff too. So they may not get it anyway. Someone may have a more, a, a better proposal in Petersburg or Conny Heights or, you know, somewhere else.
And, and so we have basically one time a year that we can apply for tax credits in March. Um, and so we try to make our application as competitive as possible, which is why we're trying to. Uh, seek a revitalization resolution tonight. Um, and, um, you know. Without that, yes, we're going to still submit our application. Um, or could someone else score higher? Because Richmond or uh some other uh city provided them with the five points. That, they would then score five points higher and they would get the money. And, uh, you know, we're, we're talking about a, a twenty point three million dollar investment. To build the development, um, to bring housing, to bring jobs to the area.
Hey, I, I've been in favor of that from the very beginning. But what it is that we have this council right here not in favor of the figures that you're presenting. So it seems to me like you, like you say, you're going off into the sunset. That seem like that's where you going. But, uh, so I mean, I, I, I was in favor, but hey, this, this, this council is not in favor of going, what, what it is that you're talking about. I'm just trying to understand that, but in regards to the revitalization, right, I'm for that. I'm for affordable housing. But what has been asked, you can't provide. So.
Yeah, which is why I asked for the, for another vote.
So, all right, I, I, I'm done.
All right, vice mayor, uh, excuse, I'm sorry, it's councillor Stokes and then vice mayor Joyner.
My question is, okay, maybe point of order. Question for mayor. How does this first vote that you just put for, asking them to bring something back to you, affect this second vote? What's the effect on the second vote?
It doesn't. I mean, and all I did was just request information. I mean, they do with it what they want.
Okay, so it doesn't affect his request for revitalization?
They can go, they can go for it and I hope.
If he wants the five points, then, you know, come back and show us something, you know, a little bit better.
Okay, see, that's, that's where you confusing me. Yet you, you giving them an ultimatum. If, you've given them, if you want five points, then we need these answers.
Yeah.
I'm saying, I'm going to give them the opportunity for the five points, but am I wasting my vote? If your five, if what you're requesting holds them up on there, you kind of count, they look, see, it feels like. One cancels out the other. So it's, so it's confusing right now. Should we table this vote?
That's what my first one motion is.
Because, do you see what I'm saying? One cancels out the other.
I don't get why we would be voting against revitalization. Of a property is just absolutely insane.
So are you asking for a motion to table this?
I would rather table it than waste a motion.
Okay.
On something you waiting for an answer that's going to hold up the majority of council. The four of them have decided whatever. But if they're deciding this based on something else, then it's premature to go into this, this vote, in my opinion.
I guess, and, and in talking to my colleagues too, I mean, if, if it's not possible to add the market rate. Could we get a vote on the revitalization?
Right, it's their revitalization.
We are, they've already voted on, the, the other vote has already gone through. So at this point. Point of order for me? Is it possible to table this until you get back with the mayor?
Can I, can I just get clarification? These, these gentlemen, um, go all over the country. They build projects, invest many dollars. Let's give them the dignity tonight to vote up or down on this so they can go on about their business. That's what I ask. When, when I bring developers to Hopewell, all I ask is that we're up straight and honest with them. And if the answer is no, the answer is no. If the answer is yes, the answer is yes. But they have a business to conduct, they have properties to build. And let's give them the, the dignity of that. They deserve that. And so that way, when they leave here, they have a, a good feeling. They say, you know what? We got, we went and pitched our best. We got a thumbs up or we got a thumbs down. They can make business decisions. That way we can continue on with the other things of the city to be done and growing economic developments.
But my concern is.
Now, councillor Stokes still has the floor.
My, my concern is the competitiveness. I know what the competitiveness is when you're going for grants as big as this. And for a development as big as this and as important as it is to my community, all right? So I'll continue to fight for them to realize that this is, in the, in the, in the way the economy is going. This is major for our community. And I'm going to continue to fight for it because if there's any way. That we can get this project moving forward. I know what the competitive is in HUD. That's why I work for HUD. But this is important. And it's the livelihoods of our citizens. Particularly low to moderate people, income people. Freeman Point is a success. And I don't know who. Who, I'm out there all the time. I have friends who live in Freeman Point. They love Freeman Point. I can't get my friends to move out. Of Freeman's point. But the most important thing is to provide affordable housing. I don't want to see ten or fifteen people sleeping in front of the library. I don't want to see that. We got a warming shelter that's full. All right? So this is important to our community. And so I'm going to keep on our back, back and forth until we get to a solid ground.
Councillor Joyner and then councillor Holloway.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to call for the vote.
Okay. Are there any objections to the call for the vote?
Yes.
Okay, then at this time, then there is, if I, if I'm correct, Mr. Kales, now we take a vote on the call for the vote? Okay, roll call please.
Councillor Day?
Yes.
Councillor Stokes?
What do we, no.
Councillor Holloway?
No.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Councillor Harris?
No.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Councillor Alice?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Okay, now this is the actual call for the vote for the motion to approve the resolution as presented tonight. Roll call.
Councillor Day?
No.
Councillor Stokes?
Yes.
Councillor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
No.
Councillor Harris?
Yeah.
Mayor Parton?
No.
Councillor Alice?
No.
Motion fails four to three.
Okay, moving on to R four, Dr. Manker.
Uh, tonight you have before you a new schedule um for council meetings. Um, the vice mayor Joyner and I met on January the twentieth. We discussed different options. We ultimately came to the conclusion for the second Tuesday. Um, the, the finance committee meeting would meet at five. Five thirty would be work sessions, presentations and public hearings. Um, regular business will only be scheduled for any um sort of um grant approvals. Um, and this actually was a concern that vice mayor and I did not discuss when I took it back to. Um, staff, they voiced their concerns about uh grant approval process. Because there was a short turnaround time, um, and some, some cases less than a month to apply for grants. And they wanted to know if on the first Tuesdays would there be uh, 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 the ability to apply. For those applications. And so, um, you know, I'm, I'm just not bringing it to the floor. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't, if we needed to. Otherwise, um, there will be no regular discussion. And then uh closed session at seven thirty if and when necessary. On the fourth Tuesdays, um, again, we begin at five P M and then regular business uh begins at seven. P M. So on the second Tuesday, well, the fourth Tuesdays of, of the month, there would not be any work sessions. Presentations or public hearings. And so, um, I do just want to say for the public before I pass the floor back to the mayor. That um, we have attempted a schedule like this before. So uh, for the public to, to. You know, uh, understand, um, and it's been some years ago, about four or five years ago, two councils ago. We attempted to have work sessions just one time out of the month and presentations and, and, and so. This is not unusual. Um, the only difference here is the begin time, which is at five P M.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to um approve the uh new meeting schedule? With the addition recommend, additions and recommendations that the uh city manager made? Oh, sorry, uh, councillor Stokes and councillor Day.
I'm concerned about the five o'clock uh. Meeting time. Will it allow those persons in the community that are interested in coming out to the meetings? To make the meeting at getting off of work at five o'clock, having to pick up children, do homework, et cetera. Um, I think five o'clock would be a disservice to the community. The, the citizens voted us here to have meetings, to have them be able to make the meetings. And five o'clock, where everybody getting off at five o'clock, they won't be able to get here. So some explanation of why five o'clock.
So five o'clock for the finance committee meeting. At this time, the finance committee meeting is scheduled for the third Tuesday. And so we are, you know, the goal was to try to consolidate. Um, the number of times that we meet um in, in, in a month. Uh, and so adding the finance committee meeting before the actual meeting was the reason for the five o'clock meeting. Um, I would say for the second, uh, the fourth Tuesday, that's a closed session. And, and normally, uh, the citizens do, do not participate or come to closed session meetings. So five o'clock would not be, you know, we didn't think five o'clock would be an issue uh for that time.
Well, the finance committee meeting, I know a lot of our citizens are interested in how we spend their money. And what we do with taxpayer money. Yeah, I love the five o'clock. It's perfect for me. I'm retired, but. And it's easier, but, and I was elected by the people, for the people to do the work of the people. So at five o'clock, finance committee meeting. Then if, can we, can we compromise then and make the finance committee meeting six o'clock? Or where it is now so that the citizens can continue to make it to that meeting and close session at five o'clock?
So, so we can move a closed session to five o'clock in order to stay at five o'clock?
That would be fine.
Okay, and then we can move the finance committee down to six.
Right, so that the citizens can come and see how the money being spent.
So that's.
If, that's a compromise.
Yes. Yes. Um, Mr. Mayor, so for the second Tuesday, if we can move, um, I put the, I put it on the floor for consideration that we move the finance committee meeting to six and this, and instead of a seven thirty closed session, it'll be a five o'clock closed session.
Okay, uh, Counsel Day and then Counsel Joyner?
Um, when are we thinking about starting this? You know, thought we only do one meeting a month for the regular meetings in the summer anyway. So I thought, you know, Ju- June or July first would be a good time to start the change.
Poor Reed, I think she was trying to start it a little bit earlier.
I was saying, you read my mind. I was saying, great, hey. We was hoping we could start a little sooner than that. Come on, girl.
I mean, I think, I mean, make for- I think, I, is it, is it my?
Yeah.
Duncan, um, I think the, you know, I don't mind when we start. I guess the main, the main reason that we wanted to implement these changes was because we really do not have enough time allocated to closed sessions. And we have all these issues that, um, we tend not to, well, just like for tonight, for instance, we did not have enough time to do it earlier on. We're gonna have to go back in there. And I just feel like, when we look at other localities, we're sort of odd man out. And because most other localities have their meetings in the afternoon, they're, they're, you know, they, they just do things differently. And, um, one of the reasons why we looked at this particular model, and ours is a hybrid model. We're not copying anybody, but, um, we're just trying to streamline things and allocate enough time to the closed sessions. Maybe we can, if, if people are not comfortable with implementing it until a little bit later, if nothing else, I think we do need to think about starting our meetings a little earlier.
Well, what's wrong with work sessions?
Pardon?
What's, what's wrong with isolating some of the things that we're doing and having a work session? You talking about other localities. Petersburg, Petersburg just came out of a work session. But I'm saying maybe have, I don't mind a Saturday or something else on some of the heavier stuff that you have on your agenda.
A special meeting, you have a special meeting.
Or have a special meeting, um, and just deal with just one item and not-
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what she's saying is, we can go and put the work sessions and things like that on, you know, one meeting and then other major action items on another one.
I don't see that. I don't see work session anywhere. Praise the Lord, that's a five thirty. I mean, but it's all, but you, you still join it into one day. I'm saying separate it out to a different date. Other localities, as she mentioned, they have work sessions on a Saturday or they'll take three days and go off on a, a, a retreat of some sort to deal with heavy stuff. But at the cost of the citizens, five o'clock, everybody's getting off at five o'clock. Come on, that's what I, the feedback I'm doing.
I guess what we're saying though, we've already decided that we're not going to, we're just gonna postpone. So we're not gonna, anything that we start at five, now, based upon this, what we've just talked about, is gonna be something that's closed session, that the public is not gonna be involved in. So, and I think this was really done to make it so that we're not leaving our citizens out here, you know, just sitting there while we're in the back doing things and, um, and, and pushing everybody, um, to be late, so they're just not sitting here. So that was the, one of the reasons why we started doing this. So I think, you know, there's some confusion. We're just gonna try and have closed sessions at five o'clock, allocate a little more time.
All right, keeping the finance meeting at five o'clock.
No.
Six.
No, six.
I mean, six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wake me up.
Yeah.
Hold on, you call for it.
Okay.
All right, so Dr. Manker, just read out, you know, for what it is for the second Tuesday.
The second Tuesday, uh, the proposal is to begin February, the first, the second Tuesday in February. The closed session will begin at five P M. The finance committee will begin at seven, at six P M. And then the, the meeting will begin at seven P M. Work session, presentations and public hearings. On the fourth Tuesday, closed session will begin at five P M. And regular business items at seven P M.
Okay.
So that's, in, uh, the, the, the regular meeting time start at seven P M now. So nothing changes with the citizens.
All right, and so everyone's okay with starting this at the second meeting in February?
Counsel Day has some concerns about starting this.
Oh.
Oh, I just, I had just mentioned maybe starting like June first since when that's when they usually do one meeting. What?
We were trying to start a little earlier than that. How about Mar- how about the first meeting in March?
How about March? How about March? That sounds good.
All right.
We start the first one in March.
First meeting in March.
Sounds great. I just love it. Okay, that sounds good.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So you got that motion? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that though, you might want to incorporate into that the corresponding effects on council rules.
Okay.
And also whatever, how you're gonna handle, I'm assuming that at your first meeting, you set a schedule for the year of your regular council meetings. So if you pass this motion as proposed, you have to take into effect changing the rules
to coincide with this.
And I'm not quite sure how you revise your schedule you've already set, but you need to pay lip service to that.
Okay.
And I, I think you can do that in a motion and the rules can be changed accordingly. I don't see major changes. Right now, all they say is, yeah, per the charter. This isn't per the charter, the time is it's beginning at seven, seven thirty P M. At least, at least once, once per month. So there are a couple of other things that don't quite jive with what-
So if we add a friendly amendment to it, to have our rules reflect these changes, we're good?
And, and I think you need to say something about how-
About the scheduling of a meeting.
Yes, 'cause don't you have that in, I don't know.
It's been, we did it the first, we did it organization-
But I don't think that that changes anything though with this.
The dates are still the same.
The dates are just the dates, okay? There, there weren't any specifics on it.
No.
Not even-
Well, no, we said them, but they were specific dates, but we, they were all, they were all the second and fourth Tuesdays.
No times.
No times. Second and fourth Tuesdays.
Okay.
Okay.
'Cause if you, okay.
Okay, so including that motion to, um, revise councils' rules to reflect this motion. Okay, roll call please.
Counsel Day?
Yes.
Counsel Stokes?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway? Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Ellis?
Yeah.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, Dr. Manker, you okay with tableing this?
Yeah, well, the budget calendar is something that I need counsel to review.
Okay, and just provide feedback on?
And just provide feedback on. The, the, the other information is just information only.
Okay. All right, yes.
Did you not second it?
Okay. Uh, okay. Do it, okay, all right, so, yeah. All right, so, uh, let's see, who made the motion again?
Nobody.
No one.
Oh, never, oh, okay. All right, so do I have a motion, uh, to approve the new, uh, work schedule as, um, as revised by the city manager and to reflect the changes in our council rules and procedures?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second it. All right, now just redo the vote, just be on the safe side.
Counsel Day?
Yes.
Counsel Stokes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. All right, so, Mr. Kalos, at this time, we can just go right back into closed session?
Counsel Day?
Yes.
Counsel Stokes?
Yes.
Counsel, Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Ellis?
Yeah.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, certification please?
Representatives for citizens of Virginia, so two point two, that's three seventy two weeks. Where all the public business matters, often the agenda, public meeting requirements issued, identified in the early meeting, motion discussed in the closed meeting.
Roll call.
Counsel Day?
Yes.
Counsel Stokes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, at this time, do I have a motion to appoint, uh, Robert Gaines and Matthew Mellon to the Economic Development Authority?
So moved.
Yes.
All right, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counsel Harris. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counsel Day?
Yes.
Counsel Stokes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Ellis?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it.